Okay. We will call to order. Ted, would you for the time being, take, take the roles, please?
Yes. We're calling this special meeting December fourteenth, twenty twenty one. Call to order. Theodore Foss is here. Virginia Bloom.
Here.
Madarima.
Here.
Colleen.
Here.
Suzanne.
Here.
Matt.
Here.
And we don't see Sarah Glavin yet.
All right, and Ted, you are here.
Oh, I'm, and I am here.
Yes. And next item is our decision to conduct a virtual meeting pursuant to state statute and the continuing declaration by the governor. Is there a motion to conduct our meeting virtually?
This is Virginia. So moved.
Sarah, second.
Ted, second.
Thank you, Ted. Having been moved and seconded, here, no discussion. Ted, will you please take the roll call vote, please?
Theodore Foss, yes. Virginia Bloom.
Yes.
Madarima.
Yes.
Colleen.
Yes.
Suzanne.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes. All right, we are moving that public comments. I did not receive any comments regarding this. David, did you?
No, not at all, Matt.
Okay, then moving on to new business, we'll move on to our calendar for twenty twenty two. As presented. Is there any discussion anyone has?
I did have a question for David. Given your message about an hour ago about the public presence in Village Hall, will that have any impact for the public access to the library?
No, that should have absolutely no effect.
Okay.
I'm assuming all different holiday sorts of traditions and everything have been checked.
I'm sorry, what is that Suzanne?
The library, I'm assuming that all various types of holidays outside the the norms have been checked against the calendar, right?
When you say checked against the calendar, what do you mean?
For our board.
There's no conflicts. That's all.
Oh.
Like, we're not meeting on a, on a high holy day of some faith.
Exactly. Thank you, Matt. I'm not feeling great today, just seeing also the words made.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, I, I apologize. I didn't, I didn't catch your meaning. Actually, the answer to that question is no. These dates are all typically the fourth Tuesday of the month. I have not intentionally checked them against a calendar of holidays, religious or otherwise.
Okay. Make sure we don't miss, like, you know.
If we, if we, yes, I understand. If we, if you find that on second, on second look that, that a particular meeting, as it's typically scheduled, does conflict with such a holiday, then, then individual meetings can always be moved by the board.
And in some years in the past, we have not had that regular board meeting in December, which is now scheduled for the twentieth of December. But that's something that we talk about usually in the fall.
Correct.
Yeah, this is the first time we've met in December in quite some time. So. Okay. We will, of course, keep an eye on those dates for conflicts that are sensitive to the community to make sure that we're not excluding anyone as we move through the year and we'll, we'll move dates as needed to respect those. With that, is there a motion to approve this calendar?
I'll make the motion.
Move by Colleen, is there a second?
A second Suzanne.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Ted, will you please take the role?
Theodore Foss, I. Virginia.
I.
Madarima.
I.
Colleen.
I.
Suzanne.
I.
Matt.
I.
And once again, of, we have one absence.
And the calendar is approved. Thank you. We now have our intergovernmental agreement. Illinois libraries present.
That's me.
Yes, I'm going to. Hi Alexandra. I'm going to, I'm going to stop sharing my screen so that Alexandra can share hers. And then she's going to, she'll take you through this through this presentation. Do you want to share your screen Alexandra?
Have to. This is fine.
Great, okay, great.
I have a presentation I can share, but I'm hoping I can keep this short for you all so that it, it doesn't have to be the full ten slide presentation I have. But essentially, when the pandemic hit, March of twenty twenty, all public libraries went, oh my goodness, how are we going to do our programs online? Let's figure this out. And we did. And as we've gotten more adept at doing that, we've also figured out how to do joint programs with other, with other libraries and saying, if we combine your programming resources and our programming resources, can we do even bigger programs altogether? And those have been successful. So last year, we had Dr. Eve Ewing. That was a joint program that we did with some other area libraries. We also had Sound Opinions. A program with Sound Opinions, that was a joint program with a, with several libraries. And so a couple libraries, public libraries in the state of Illinois got together. We cannot find any record of any other state libraries doing this. But we, and created what we're calling Illinois Libraries Present, a joint library programming initiative. There are six hundred and eight library, public libraries in the state of Illinois. We have a goal of getting a third of them, so two hundred. We just reached that goal today. So we have two hundred public libraries that are signing on that are saying, we're willing to join. And there's a membership fee. And then we will combine all of our resources and put on really great programs for all of our patrons. So I'm on the steering committee. I've been on it for several months now. I've lost track of time. One of our librarians, Margita Lyticas, on the programming committee, helping actually form the programs. There's a marketing committee that's coming up with all the marketing materials and the program committee also works with the contracts, with the authors and all that type of thing. So it's a huge operation. We're really excited. So I can tell you about how the fee is assessed. Thanks for asking. But this, I also just want to say that right now, we're talking about a pilot program because this is such a huge endeavor we're taking on. We wanted to do it for a year. But just to get the funding and what we needed to do, we decided to do it for six months instead of a year. And we're also working with Rails, so all libraries who are part of Rails will be, will pay our membership fee through mail Rails. The operating budget, so what we're doing is we did want it to be as equitable as, as possible. So of those three hundred or six hundred and eight public libraries, three hundred and twelve have an operating budget less than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the year. Those are small rural, small rural libraries that can't afford a huge programming fee, but we want to include them. So they have a much smaller membership cost. There are forty four libraries in the state of Illinois. We are one of them that have an operating budget of over five million. So those libraries have a larger fee. So we will be paying one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for six programs. Like, we get access to six programs for the cost of, I mean, like, one of these programs, we could not do for that amount of money. So it really is a really great thing for our buck essentially, because we're, we're combining all of our resources. But, and so that's, that's how we assess the fee. We kind of, we reached out to small libraries in, in, in that are part of the Illinois Library Heartland System. That's the southern state of Illinois equivalent of Rails. And they will be and there, and ask them, you know, like, there was a whole survey done of like, what, what could you afford? What, how could you participate? So that's how we've gotten to two hundred participating libraries by having a scale based on the operating budget and the programming budget that that library might have. So we're really excited about it. I can share. I have not put these on the calendar yet because we do need the board to sign the inter, intergovernmental agreement so that we are officially participating. And I didn't want to jinx anything and put anything on the, the calendar before it's official. But I, once, once it's all, all the, the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, we can, we're going to have our, our January program is with author Sylvia Moreno Garcia, who wrote Mexican Gothic. And then in February, it's Jasmine Guillory, who is a romance author. And in March, we're looking at having Jenny Lawson, who's written some memoirs. And these are huge New York Times bestselling authors that we're going to be able to have access for our patrons to have to get to see them through, through the library and Zoom. And I'm, that's, that's just a little preview, very excited about those. And we're hopeful that this pilot is so successful that then we can launch in earnest in the fall of next year with a longer commitment. But that's where we're at. I do have some, just, just, just in anticipation of some questions. The, the, we've, the, there are two law firms, two lawyers have already reviewed this intergovernmental agree, agreement for libraries. So Britt Eisley of Ansel Glick Law Firm created the IGA, and Eric Thompson from Thompson and Thompson Law Group reviewed it. So it has been vetted by multiple attorneys. And right now, we've had a lot of questions about, will this include other types of libraries? Again, we're a pilot, we're a pilot program. We're focusing on adult programs at public libraries for right now, but I mean, here's hoping we're super successful and can do this in lots of different formats. And the board needs to sign it because it is an intergovernmental agreement between local governments of libraries. And so elected officials do need to sign it so that it's an intergovernmental agreement. But I'm happy to answer other questions. There are some.
Any questions for Alexandra?
When you're talking about libraries, there are, is that library systems or like?
No, individual public libraries. There are six hundred and eight public libraries in the state of Illinois.
And so the budget, the budget for this project, all told, is about, what, a quarter of a million dollars?
Um, I can gather that money, but it really depends on how many libraries we get on board. That's, that's the total operating budget. So that's why we're kind of, we're, that's why we're, we've been planning on if we get X number of this many, this, this system, how big this library is, if we get X number of this many libraries, and we get X number of this many libraries, we'll have this budget. And that's why we were kind of hoping to get to two hundred. And we're really excited that we did. We're giving, we've all of our contacts reached out to all public libraries in the state of Illinois and we're, we're hoping, so we're gonna, we have library boards can review this and, and library staff can join through the end of January. So we're even going to do a program and people, if libraries are on the fence, they can see hopefully a successful program and say, yeah, I want part of that for the next five months and then join. But then after that, it will be closed and we'll start again in the fall after we have a successful six months.
And then two, two more questions. So we have over six hundred public libraries in the state, and it's absolutely wonderful that our state is thinking of this. And are we going to approach the state government for additional funds?
We've been, we have applied for a state grant. We're also applying for an American Library Association grant. So we are reaching out on several different avenues. Yeah.
And just as an ancillary question, with those six hundred and eight public libraries in Illinois, how many people in the state of Illinois live in communities where there is not a public library?
That's a great question, and I don't know the answer to that. And there's also a lot of like incorporated, unincorporated. Do you have access to, I mean, I know that much from my library studies of, you know, you may not live in an incorporated area, but you can apply to get one. That kind of thing. So.
It just because I, I'm always fascinated when I travel to find out what communities don't have a public library. And sometimes it's jaw dropping to realize the kinds of communities that don't.
It's been a really great process, too, just to get to work with libraries from across the whole state because another issue that a much smaller libraries are like, well, can we get, do all of our patrons have access to reliable broadband that can zoom this? Because these programs are virtual. So talking about that kind of thing, too. So. Yeah.
Thank you.
Suzanne, did you have a question?
That was, that was pretty much going to be my question was about the, about access in terms of people.
So we're trying, we're trying to work with the smaller libraries, or really just any library. And, and we were talking about can some of these libraries host in person, you know, and we thought, well, that's a great idea, whether you're a small library or not. When we go back to in-person programming, hey, you know, come on, yeah, Virginia was like, you know, well, you can watch this from the comfort of your home, or you can come into the veterans' room and watch this program with other people. So we hope to get there. But also hope to support smaller libraries with that, too.
I was astounded to find that a wealthy community in Texas, Trophy Club Texas, decided that they did not need a public library because everybody can buy their books on Amazon. So it's just amazing.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions for Alexandra?
No, I just really love how it, it kind of evolved out of the pandemic need. And then we'll wait. How can we keep this going and make it?
Yeah.
Really.
One of those silver linings of the pandemic, I think, that would not have happened otherwise. We wouldn't have known that we can do these kind of virtual programs, first of all, and then that we could do them together. So we don't have, there's no more, who, which library is going to host it? And who's, you know, how it's like, they're hosted online. So yeah, it's been, it's been really, it's a lot. There's a lot of, there's a lot that I'm learning, but it's been, it's a really great initiative, I think. So I'm excited to hopefully report back to the board on how it goes in six months.
Oh, I guess. Sorry.
I was going to say, this is just sort of for my own edification, but is there a map that you have that pinpoints where the accepting libraries are? I just be interested to see what the.
Yeah. We have an Excel sheet that we're keeping track and just contacts and all of that, but we have not gotten to that, that point yet.
Okay. I'm originally I'm originally from Southern Illinois, so I'd be interested to see what communities there are, are taking advantage of something like this and, and what communities, you know, if we can find a commonality or a similarity between, especially in a state like Illinois, we're getting above IAD and below IAD to want to do anything together. See what communities, you know, were able to, to sort of bridge this and, and come together and, and, you know, try to share these programs and see if we can glean anything from that for, for other, other things.
Did you have another question?
Oh, just, I, I love, yeah, as, as the, the kind of connections with other libraries and the collaborative nature of it. And you mentioned that there were like different committees and some of our librarians were on certain committees. So what are there, some libraries that are doing programming and then others are just members?
Yeah, it depends again on, on the, on their capabilities, too. Like, if your library has a budget of less than two hundred and fifty thousand, you probably have two or three staff on your library, and you probably don't have time to be on a committee of this nature. So you're just going to go, yep, here's my membership fee, and I'm going to do the January meeting and the April meeting event. So, or all six of them. But, and we're actually trying to be very conscious of that and make sure that, because we, we could have more staff on these committees, but we want to make sure that other voices are able to join, too. And it's not made up of a lot of Chicagoland libraries. So that's why, right now, myself and Margita are on, but I hope to eventually rotate out Margita and have other staff join and, and, but we want to make sure it is as collaborative as possible. So we're trying to be, be aware of those things, too.
That's excellent. And I'm assuming that, you know, in terms of if there's a programming committee particularly, that that committee is going to be conscious of representation.
Yeah, that's why, so we do, the first three authors are Hispanic and a Hispanic author, a black author, and a white author for January, February, and March. But it's something that we're definitely keeping in mind as we create the programs. Yeah.
And I think this is going to be really helpful as more and more of the pushback slash attack on libraries and books, you know, kind of shows its face. So having relationships among the libraries in this way can be really helpful, I think.
Yeah. Matt, did you have a question?
No.
Just that you need to sign it. So if everyone else agrees.
I'm, I'm very proud of this initiative. Thank you Alexandra.
Thanks Ted.
All right. So is there a motion to approve this IGA as presented?
So moved Suzanne.
Ted, seconds.
Ted edged out Colleen there. I believe Sarah has, has gotten on the call. So Sarah, would you please take the roll call on this, please?
Hello, Sarah. Matt, I don't see her on the screen. So do you want me to take the role?
Yes, if you could. She may be having connection issues, so.
Yes, okay. Ted, I. Virginia.
I.
Madarima.
I.
Colleen.
I.
Suzanne.
I.
Matt.
I.
And we hope that Sarah is there.
Hey, guys. I'm sorry, my audio is not great. I did hear it and I'm an I.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm driving. I had an event, I had an event and I let Matt know, but my apologies for being late.
Not a problem. That slipped my mind, Sarah, but sorry about that. I would, I forgot to mention that to the board. I missed that. I forgot that you said that. So that is approved. Thank you, everyone.
Well, and I'll make sure we get a copy presented for you to sign that, okay?
Okay. Sounds, sounds good. So now we are into the meat of our agenda for this evening. My apologies to those of the vegetarian life. But as we talk about moving into searching for a new executive director, David had shared the names of a number of search firms. I dug back through my emails and found some of the documents that the board used in our last search, which I felt was very, very successful and you know, got us excellent, excellent executive director despite his decision to abandon us. Not better, but it's, you know. But I think, so I shared those, I, I didn't do anything that we had that had the names of candidates from last time, but I did include the the advertisement that Alice Calabrese helped draft that went out to the various organization boards as well as information about some question, some questions that the board used during our process and staff had during the process. So first, I would like to give David a chance to maybe share some of his thoughts about his experience from that, the other side of the table about what, you know, so any of his takeaways that we could may want to incorporate into our process this time.
Sure. Happy to. Well, I think first I would say that the, my experience going through the search process, eight and a half years ago, almost nine years ago now, was a very, it was the most public experience of mine applying for and interviewing for a position. In other words, the library was very intentional about including not only the members of the board of trustees, obviously, but the members of the staff of the library and members of the, of the community in, in the process. And I think that that would be even, if I dare say, more important this time for the board to make sure that, that you're following a process like that. And I think that any, any one of the of the firms that you might choose to lead the search for you or to help you lead the search are prepared, are prepared to do that. I mean, it's not, I think back then, it was maybe a little unusual for a search to be that public. I don't know. At least, again, it was, in, in terms of my experience today, it's not at all. I think that all of these kinds of searches are, are much more public events than they used to be. So I think any one of them is, is going to do that. I think it's obviously, I don't need to tell you this, going to be very important for this, for the entire process to be as transparent as possible and to be grounded in all of the, all of the strategic priorities and principles that you have, particularly those around, around equity and anti-racism. So I think that however you want to go about choosing a firm to work with, whether, you know, you want to issue a request for proposal, or if there's some other way you want to go about trying to select one, that it's very important that you make, make that explicit in, in, in hiring a firm, that they understand that, that these are your priorities and principles and, and, and you intend to to adhere to them as you're going through the, through the search. I think that it's, it's my recommendation that you, that you definitely do hire a firm to do this. I know Matt has already had a conversation, maybe several, with Billy Trees, our Director of Human Resources. And, and Billy is certainly, he certainly knows that he will need in some way to be a part of the process, but Billy shouldn't be the one to lead the, the process. It wouldn't be right for him to do so. I think the board definitely needs to hire a, a firm that you trust and, and want to, to, to lead the process for you. And, and again, any one of these firms is going to come and, and interview you as a board and make sure that they understand how you want to, what kind of process you want and how you want to go about doing your search. And as I said, you know, I see my primary job now for the next couple of months is to do whatever you need me to do to help you in that, in that respect. So what, again, if you want me to, to put together an RFP, or if you want to tell me what you would want such a, such a statement to, to include, but you know, that, that's for you to have a conversation about it and decide how you want to go about doing that. I guess the only other thing I would, I would say about that, too, is I know many libraries and I, and I, I don't know if this, I can't, I'm trying to remember whether this was the experience back, you know, eight, nine years ago, when, when this library went through a process of hiring an executive director. But I know that many and, and many consultants or, or, or search firms would, would advise you to hire an interim director to, to lead the organization or to help you lead the organization in the interim. My recommendation is that you think perhaps of not doing that. The, the leadership team that we have in place right now, all eight of them, they're all, they're all excellent individually and collectively. They are all prepared to work together to lead the organization through whatever interim period there is between next March first and whenever you select your next executive director and that person begins. So I don't, I, in my opinion, again, you're obviously free to make any other decision you want, but in my opinion. in my opinion, you don't really need to go through the time and expense of trying to find an interim director to come in and and lead the organization because you have an excellent leadership team that's prepared to do that. If you decided that among them, you needed to have at least one of them designated as sort of liaison between the leadership team and the board, or sort of a first among equals that, you know, so that you can identify one individual person. You know, it wouldn't be hard for the leadership team to decide, you know, who that might be and obviously, somebody that you were comfortable with. So again, that's my recommendation. Obviously, you can you can choose to do something else if you want. So, you know, I I'm here to to assist you in any way you you need to to go through this process. Just tell me what, you know, what it is you're thinking, what what questions you've got. You know, otherwise, as I've said before, it's, you know, I I it's been my my honor and privilege to serve as your executive director for the past eight and a half years. And I thank you for the experience and for all of your support, and I and I do appreciate your understanding that I'm choosing to say as, you know, as little personally about my decision as as necessary. And you've all been wonderful about that, and I thank you for that, too.
You're very welcome, David. And just so everyone else is is kind of up to speed, I reached out to Billy because I had been talking with someone else who was with the I'd been talking with Sarah Spivey about their search for their superintendent and the role that their HR person had in it. And I just wanted to reach out to Billy to let him know that at least my expectation was that he would not be that I was not looking for to charge him with leading the effort of finding his next boss. I wanted him to know that, you know, my, at least my thought would be that he would coordinate with whichever search, you know, firm or person we used to hire to that, but that his role in this process would be somewhat of a support and not as a lead. So I didn't know, you know, I hadn't talked to David about this in ahead of time, and I probably should have given him a heads up that I was calling Billy, but it's I wanted to give him a peace of mind that we weren't going to be putting that I at least was not looking to put that on him with everything else he had to do and put him in that position. So I wanted to to, you know, and I only had that one conversation with him, but it was just I wanted him to know that that's where I was coming from. And I hope everybody else is okay with that, but it's a I thought he he deserved that heads up.
Yeah. Yeah, and Billy and I had had really already talked about that anyway, Matt, and I know he he was, I think he was both appreciative and and relieved to know that you weren't expecting to 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 actually lead the lead the process and and and, you know, Billy has had longer than any member of my leadership team to think about all of this because he was the first person I went to tell him originally of my my plans to retire, so.
So you know, I think last last time we had our consultant worked with us to draft a basically a job, a job posting. Then they so for a period of time solicited applications. The consultant, having heard from us, having met with us about what we were looking for, narrowed that down to a list of finalists for us to look at and see if we wanted to bring all of those people in for interviews, or if we just wanted to bring some of them in. And then I forgot who did the coordination of if we brought them in in person, or I mean, now we have virtual options, but at the time it was coordinating travel and where they would stay. And then we had our their meetings with the staff and then also the board and closed session. Because we were still, you know, trying to keep while it was more public than David was ever experienced. We were still trying to respect a level of privacy to not expose people to issues at their home organizations. Not knowing what people.
I'm yeah, I'm sorry. I'm I'm glad you you mentioned that, Matt, because I think that might be something for this board to to think about, either individually or together and 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 perhaps talk about. In other words, thinking about how important that that particular piece is to you because my experience most recently watching some of these firms conduct searches for libraries and in many parts of the country is that some of them do not, at some point, they make it clear that the names of candidates, maybe not at the beginning of a process, but certainly as a candidate advances to a a level of a finalist for a position, if shall you say, that that their names are going to be broadcast and made public, and the world is going to know that they've applied for this position and is being considered. And and in order to even be considered for a position like like the ones that they're searching for, these candidates have to agree to that. They they have to say, I understand that if I advance in this process, I will no longer have that measure of privacy. Everyone will know that I'm looking for this for this particular job. So, you know, again, that's that's typical. That's common now, and and most of you probably realize that. So I mentioned that just because of what you just said, Matt, that, you know, I don't know how important it is to you that you afford candidates, even even finalists, some measure of privacy in that respect, but that's not typically nowadays, that's not what happens.
So what are your thoughts on that, David, just in terms of as as someone who is not going into somewhere else, but like what would be?
Well, my my personal feeling about it about that is that I hate it. I I I don't, I mean, on the one hand, I understand that there there are greater and greater demands than ever for complete transparency in a process. But on the other hand, not every excellent candidate might want a current employer or others to know that that they're looking for a new job or that they're about perhaps to accept a new job until they've actually have the job. And again, these the the way these that these searches and processes are are followed. Now, that's for some people. If again, if you are if you are that far along in the process and are being seriously considered, your your name becomes public. So again, I mean, just speaking for myself, I I very much dislike that turn of events, but that's, again, it's typically what happens. I mean, unless unless you are clear with a, I mean, if if in other words, if this board feels very strongly one way or the other, then then that's, I think that's something that you need to make clear to a consultant when you're about to hire them to help you with the process and see and see what they say about that. And 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 also, I I guess, to think about how how transparent does does the Oak Park community expect you to be about this? In other words, would do you think that you would be able to get so far as to offer the the job to a to a selected candidate without making their name public at that point until they've actually accepted the job and you've negotiated their acceptance? So.
Okay.
Just is again, it's, I think it's something important for you all to to think about.
Yeah. And then part of that also process was after having a closed session interview with the candidates, we went out for dinner to socialize, to get to know kind of the personality of that person outside of that event. And so just David, did you find that 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 was a a helpful part of that process?
I I I found.
Someone who got the job?
Yeah, well, I mean, I mean, I I I mean, I enjoyed it very much, but, you know, again, it, yes, it's, I mean, I I say that being a very social person myself, I I feel very comfortable even in a room full of strangers going to an event like that. And, you know, if that is, and and I think that at least after I after I had had the job for a while, the the person who was then the president of the board told me that that evening was sort of a defining moment for the board in deciding that they wanted to hire me. So at least according to that individual, going out to dinner wasn't important for for that person, an important part of the of the whole process and was at least for that person, sort of a defining moment in deciding who and who they did not want to hire. So, yeah, I mean, again, not not everyone enjoys that kind of that kind of an event being under, I mean, it it happened after a long day of interviews for me and some people may not may not be ready to to then go out to dinner with with the people that are interviewing them. But again, it's it it really depends on the individual, I think, a lot.
Okay.
Well, I think I think that's an interesting point when you think about it, that because we our library is a fairly large library with a lot of staff and the community is fairly engaged, like it might be more important than for a search for a smaller library or something.
Yeah.
Um, I have some thoughts, Matt.
Yeah.
Is it good? I was really happy to see what what the search process was like in 2012, and I was astounded at how different the questions are going to be in 2021 and 2022 than they were in 2012. That being said, they were good questions nine years ago. And the the two first questions that were asked is why do you want to be in Oak Park? What and why are you moving? Then I I second thing I realized as as trustees, we have three main duties. The budget, hiring an executive director, and advocating for our library. And I I think that the search was really very good. I remember when I first thought about running for the Board of Trustees, I talked to a woman, Peggy Sullivan, who in retirement became a consultant for looking at librarians. And Peggy Sullivan is no longer with us, but, you know, I I think that she is a consultant. What we need for a consultant now is very different from what she did. And our process is going to be very different from the way that it was in 2012. I was also quite surprised at how quickly we went from looking for an executive director and hiring one. I think it was less than six months, David, right?
I think, yeah, I think that's right. I I I applied for the job originally, probably toward the end of 2012. And or, you know, maybe even the very beginning of 2013, and I accepted the position and my first day was May 1st.
And I I really appreciate your thinking or your advice about maybe not going through that process of having an interim director. But my caveat to that is what happens if we have a huge hiccup? We know, as in in your term here, you know, we've had a drug death in the bathroom. We've, you know, had staff issues and all of that stuff. And I'm very happy to hear that you think that the the leadership team could handle that. And I and, you know, maybe having the the first among equals would be good. But things, unexpected things could happen.
Oh, sure.
And so so to 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 think about that, but you know, our, one of our main responsibilities is as a Board of Trustees, is hiring an executive director. And I'm really appreciate the fact that you think that you have trust in the leadership team that they could handle things in the coming six months.
Yeah, oh, I I I do. And but again, I think, yes, you you make good points and and maybe partly it does depend on how long of a process it ends up being for the board to to find and select the next your next executive director. In other words, if the if the if after hiring a a an executive search firm and you begin the process, if it if it becomes clear that your search may stretch well into or far or farther into 2022, then then you maybe in first anticipated. You know, you might, at that point, yeah, you it the advice might be better to to have somebody else step in who can just manage day to day administrative tasks and let so that the leadership team members can continue focusing on the work that they have to do.
Hey, David, I have a a quick question, and this might go to Billy and Jody and and maybe some other people on the team. I know you talked about using a first among equals. My concern with that is how will the rest of our library staff feel choosing one of the members of leadership? I think a good portion of the people who work at the library have come in under your leadership or knowing that you were the executive director, they did not come in with potentially one of their bosses or one of their department heads being in that position. So how, and I'm not talking about the workload, I'm talking about how would people feel having one of those people given that kind of responsibility, however temporary, however transient? How would the rest of our library staff react to that? And how would you propose that one of those first among equals be chosen?
Excellent questions. I I mean, honestly, I don't know. I I don't know the answer to the question. How would a lot of other staff members feel about one of the members of the leadership team being selected to be a sort of a temporary lead to the board as you do your search? The way if you were going to do that, the way that I envisioned it happening was that I would, you know, I've already sort of had this conversation with the leadership team. And among us, we would talk about it. I would make a recommendation to you and and see if that was acceptable to you. On the other hand, if I, you know, have that conversation again with them and they and none of them feel comfortable doing that, then I think I would, at that point, I would probably change my my recommendation and suggest that you find somebody else to be the interim director. And again, you know, the the firm that you choose may have may have very good reasons why you should you should, you know, choose otherwise, too. So again, my my recommendation is based on two things. It's based on on what I know about this team and how well they work together and how prepared they are to do what needs to be done to make sure that the both the day to day administrative tasks tasks are taken care of and that you, the board, have what you need in order to fulfill your responsibilities as board members in the in the interim. And that, you know, there are several, I think, among them that would be willing and able to sort of lead them as a as a liaison to you. So that's, I mean, that's what I be I'm basing my recommendation on, just my my knowledge and experience of how excellent they are individually and as a team. But again, this has to be, it's it what I what I think and feel in the end doesn't matter as much as what you think and what and what you're comfortable with. And you need to do what you think is best for the organization and and for and for your support.
I was wondering about it in terms of like the other side of the equation. When we come out of the interim period, you know, in terms of if they're working as a team as equals, you know, and you know that better than we do, like what how that works and how to how to navigate this interim period so that
Sure.
retain that value that you've built in a leadership team that works well together.
Sure.
And that that doesn't kind of upset the balance and.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's that's those that's are are those are great points, too. You know, and the way that the way this that it happened in the organization, from my memory, eight and a half years ago, was that again, the lot, the Oak Park Library did not hire an out eight and a half years ago was that, again, the lot, the Oak Park Library did not hire an out, an outside individual or executive to be the interim director. At the time, the library had two assistant directors. Um, one of them was, uh, the assistant director for what at the time they called front of house and back of house. Um, and those two assistant directors were, were essentially the interim director together, uh, in the, in the interim. So when I, when I, when I was applying for the job, um, other than working with Alice Calabrese Barry, who was the, your consultant, I was also communicating with these two assistant directors who were working to make sure that all of the, um, all of the administrative, uh, tasks that needed to be accomplished in the interim were done. So, uh, again, at the time, again, back then, the library didn't hire, uh, and, and Matt, correct me if I'm, if my memory is incorrect, but I think that's how it worked.
Yeah. Um, I think, yeah, they, I think Rebecca Teasdale, um,
Right.
handled the, uh, you know, a lot of the coordination regarding the hiring process. And then, uh, but yeah, they were both kind of working, um, hand in hand.
Now, I don't, I have no idea how either of them felt about, about doing those tasks, but that's how it was.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I, I'm sorry. Can I say, I just, um, I wanted to say, I really appreciate the things that, uh, that Suzanne um, and, and others have been, uh, talking about in terms of like the importance of an interim director that might be, or just thinking about like the, the importance of having somebody step in that place who doesn't have to, um, then step back, uh, you know, uh, once that period is done. But I actually think that that might be a potential strength, you know, like that's a, like, it's a good way. Like, I, I don't know. Again, I'm in an, I'm a university and I, I often wonder what kind of decisions people in very high places in the administration would make if they then had to go, you know, back into like the faculty or staff and then see how any of the things that they stood for or against, uh, how that affects like the daily workings, right? So that might, that might not be, uh, that might not be a bad thing, or it might be less theoretical. I, on a completely different note, I, I also wanted to point out because Ted was saying that the questions um, that were asked off David, um, eight, nine years ago are so different from what we might ask today. And I was thinking that that's like an unnamable quality in the executive director too, is that, you know, they might push us to, in, in directions to be asking questions, uh, a, a few years from now that we may not even be think, we may not be able to think of, you know, ourselves or that, that we wouldn't have asked them, um, ourselves. So that's sort of, uh, I don't know how we, how we would tap that ineffable. Like, what is it that you would break? Like, what are we not thinking of? But, you know, what, what would you, what would you like us to be thinking of? But I just, I just wanted to, you know, point that out too, that that's, that's a change that we would see under the leadership um, of the, of the library, right? Just to see like what questions we might ask.
So, M- M- Maderima, I'd like to, uh, build on that question and ask David directly. And he's been very forthcoming about thinking of the future. How would you like to have a, apply for this job if you were applying in 2022? And, uh, you've, you've mentioned very, very frankly about the issues of privacy and all of those things. But why would you apply for a job as executive director of the Oak Park Public Library?
Why would I, knowing what I know about the library today, choose to apply for the job today?
Yes. I mean, white, now you're, you're thinking, you're, you're thinking of your next, next step in your career. Um, what would be compelling and what would be, um, disarming? And what would be repellent about a, an application process?
Oh, my.
And I, I don't, I don't think you need that answer now, but I think that that is something that when we are looking at an executive search committee and, and, uh, and group, that, that would be very useful to know.
Okay.
But don't, don't name any names though.
I mean, I don't know if you're, I mean, if you're, yeah, I mean, I don't know if you're looking for some kind of answer right now. But I mean, I, I think that there are, there are many, many things that, that are, that are compelling about this job that many people across the country are going to find very compelling about this job. This, this library's reputation precedes itself. This library for its size has a, has a national reputation. Um, as, as one of the most innovative and progressive organizations uh, for public libraries in the country.
You'll have to ask her.
And you are not, I mean, in that respect, you're not going to have any difficulty finding extraordinarily qualified people to, to apply, apply for this job. Um, I think that the library organization itself is attractive for a lot of reasons. Um, not the least of which is its access to resources. It's, it's, it's proximity to a major metropolitan area. I mean, they're just, there are just so many things about the organization and, and the community that would make it attractive. I think that any, any person who is, um, you know, who is wise enough to investigate the community that it's moving into is going to also find out a lot of things about the community that may give them pause as well. And I don't think that that's, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn or saying anything too shocking when I, when I say that. There are, there are, there are, all one has to do is, is look at the rate of turnover of, of executives within the organization to think that there might be something there to, to look at or, or think about. Um, there are, and, and, you know, I mean, of course I could go on. Um, so I think that while there are many, many reasons why you will have many people very interested in this job, um, there were also people who I think will have, particularly people that may, as I said before, advance through your process, may end up having a lot of questions for you about how you as a board intend to support them and the organization uh, in, um, in an environment that is, uh, I think very stressful um, and very, um, controversial in some respects. Um, and you'll just need to, you know, you're going to need to be prepared to answer those kinds of questions. So how was that for a diplomatic answer?
It was, it was perfect. And I'm hoping that, uh, when you speak to whomever the consultant is, that you voice those things.
I certainly will.
Well, I don't, I don't doubt it.
One, what, uh, what, probably one way before March 1st and one way after. Yeah, the executive director is not required to live in Oak Park. I certainly wasn't required to live in Oak Park when I, uh, applied for the job. What other questions? I mean, what else can I answer? What else can I say, um, to help you out?
I guess one of the things I'm trying to understand when you talk about how the the leadership team works so well together and can handle all of this, like what are the things, the qualities in an executive director that we're looking for to help kind of come into that and continue the things that are, that are, that are working well.
It's, it's, this is one of the most collaborative environments I've ever worked in. And I like to think that I myself had something to do with, with cultivating and growing that. It's when I, when I came to the organization almost nine years ago, um, it was not as collaborative as, as it is now. And it did not have, uh, a leadership or as it was called then, management team that worked as well together as it does today. And I would certainly hope that any executive director that you hire, you would spend some good time figuring out what that individual's leadership style is and how well they understand and fit within a very, very collaborative environment. I've never worked for an organization, and again, it wasn't necessarily this way to the degree that I think it is now nine years later. Um, that is, that is as collaborative and that is as interested in understanding what all of its employees think and understanding what all of their experiences are. And I'm not saying that, that we're perfect at that. Uh, there are certainly lots of room to improve in that respect. But I'm saying that, um, I think we, and, and Billy Treese, the best human resources director I've ever worked with anywhere, um, has had a lot to do with helping me and the leadership team to build that kind of a culture. And you don't want, you don't want to lose that because nobody expects, especially people who are younger than I am. And, and these days, it feels like most people are younger than I am. Um, they don't, they don't expect to come into an organization that is a, that is especially an organization like our public library, uh, or any public library that is, uh, that is a very hierarchical, top-down kind of an organization. They expect one, uh, that's, that's not only going to be a very collaborative environment, but that's going to want to understand the experiences of all of its employees and, and to appreciate all of their contributions.
Thank you.
So we, at this point, I think, you know, looking at our, our path ahead, David provided a name, you know, a list of names of potential, you know, consultants for this. As well as do we feel like we just want to, um, do a, our, you know, a request for proposal, um, you know, pub, you know, a public call, uh, to see who would be interested in and facility, facilitating that I think, I can't remember if they sent it to everyone, but I know I, I saw an email from one of those, uh, folks on the, on your list, David, that had read, that, um, emailed, having heard about your.
I wasn't, I wasn't that aware of that.
Yeah.
I'm going to guess that it was, I'm going to guess that it was either John Keister or Bradbury and Associates.
Easter.
There you go. The two, the two biggest, the two that had, sort of share the, share the market across the country on executive searches for public libraries are John Keister and Associates and Bradbury and Associates. They're the two largest by far.
Okay. So do we want to, um, put out a, a call for proposals? Um, to receive, you know, packets from those, uh, that, that list of, um, firms and Colleen had a recommendation, uh, for, um, a name of a, of a group that works, uh, primarily with not-for-profits, correct? Um, but that may also, um, possibly be interested, um, in submitting for this. Does that sound like a direction we want to take or is there?
One question and thought I had is, um, when we're talking about Leif, kind of the biggest firms that have been doing this the longest and all of that, and then trying to like match that up with the anti-racist policy um, and equity policy and like, I don't know in this arena, but a, a lot of times the larger entities and the longer line, you know, the, aren't necessarily on the most cutting edge in terms of anti-racist, um, outreach. And I just don't know if that's, um, and, and not even outreach, because that's not the right word, but, uh, using that lens, um, for the process. Um, just wondering if maybe there might be some that are not the largest that might have that in mind more. And I don't, I have no idea about the answer. It's a whole new, whole new world for me.
And Suz, and Suzanne, on that point, when I look at the history of that 2012 um, search, I was just really struck at how different the questions were than they are now. And so what, what is cutting edge?
I'm just thinking, you know, in the publishing world, the big publishers versus some of the, the newer, smaller publishers. When I think about, um, writing, uh, you know, uh, organizations that are support for writers and illustrators. Some of the longest existing are the least adaptable and flexible and willing to change. Um, so I just don't know what the parallel is here with something like this kind of search firm and libraries.
Well, and to that, is the RFP, is the solicitation direct to the six firms that we know of? Or to Matt's earlier email, does it also go in rails?
That was going to be my question is, are we just going to offer this to the people we presume would be interested? Or are we going to make a larger call? Because to Suzanne's point, the people who have done this in the past are going to do this the same way they have in the past. There's, there's no guarantee we will luck out again and get somebody as open-minded and progressive as David is if we're using those same methods.
I, I would, I would suggest that not only do you intentionally send them to firms that you're aware of, but that you post it in a way that others might, might see it. You know, that could be with the American Library Association. It could be with Rails. It could be with, you know, there could be other, other ways of, of advertising the fact that you are looking for a firm or an individual to help you do an executive search and, and anyone with the capacity to do that. And it's gonna, you know, let's be honest, it requires some, some capacity. You have to have some, some resources, uh, you know, uh, at your disposal to, to do this kind of work. Um, they're going to, they're going to apply if they're interested. They're going to let you know that they're interested in being considered. Um, I mean, I, I, Billy and I only gave you the names of the people that, that, that we know about. Um, that doesn't mean that there are, are not other individuals or organizations that might be prepared to, to do it as well.
I think this might be a question for Billy, maybe for David, you as well. I know in the past with searches, we've talked about going outside of rails because of the makeup of the population that generally does have access to those. And then the general look of the professional library population. Are there other places? I know we've, we've tried, we've stepped out of our comfort zone to try to locate other places to get other employees. And this is, this is a different beast altogether. But are there other places outside of rails and sort of the, where we could post this? I, I, to your point, yes, it should be posted somewhere where someone can, can opt in essentially. But can we make sure that we're putting it someplace where those people will see it? Um, and do we know where those places are? No is an okay answer.
I will say that I have recently reached out to the president of the ALA Black Caucus um, on this specific point. Um, to, to say, it was more specifically about making sure that when we do post the job that we posted in as many places beyond the typical ALA, ILA, you know, circles, um, to try and get, um, solicit some feedback from her. Um, as to any thoughts she might have of where we can do that. I have not heard back from her yet, but I only reached out to her yesterday via LinkedIn. So, uh, I don't know how active she is on that process. I'll reach out to her via other means. Um, this week.
I, I, Matt.
Yes.
I had a call, uh, yesterday with Tracy Hall, um, at ALA about some other things, work-related things. But I mentioned to her that we were, um, in this process and she does have some recommendations for, um, you know, as a black female leader of an organization, you know, where, you know, she put organizations she thinks maybe, um, have been underutilized. Um, so she has some suggestions she's going to send to me and I was going to share them with you and Billy.
Perfect.
And then I also reached, reached out to Chris Brown, uh, at, uh, the new commissioner in Chicago. And he had, um, a couple of firm recommendations that. A couple of firm recommendations that, you know, as he was considering a move. Prior to coming to Chicago that he had talked to that he thought had some very thoughtful approaches around. You know, really frankly, organizations that used a better process in his opinion about. Evaluating his, his commitment and ability to lead with a focus on equity. And so I'll include those as well.
That'd be wonderful, Sarah. Thank you. So. I think it sounds like we're on. Sort of a consensus around going to an RFP and going broadly with it.
Is there an opportunity for all of us to, I saw the draft from the last time, but. Or is there an opportunity for us to see like a current draft that we'll all have provide feedback on or do we not want to go that route?
I think so. I think we, I, I think that would be wise because I think we need to make. Well, I think for the RFP, that will be, you know, like when we do the posting for David's position with a consultant. That will be that time that we review that because that was, that was the thing that went out for applicants. But. I think right now. I, I'm sure some of you have written RFP. I have never done one, so I will defer to. The, you know, the experienced ones on that. To, to work on putting that together, but I think. It sounds to me like we're on a consensus around going to RFP for that, going to that list David sent as well as. Casting a wider net once we get some of that feedback that from Sarah's contacts. And hopefully if I get some feedback from the Black Caucus President as well.
I know you mentioned Colleen, you've got some nonprofit kind of recruitment firms. The other question I have, there's a few firms that I've worked with in the past. That are, that are really focused on identifying. You know, executive leaders for nonprofits specifically that are more representative of the community organizations that they're serving. So I don't, I'd be curious kind of Billy's perspective or David's perspective. You know, from your experience and your understanding of the job, would you feel comfortable kind of considering a recruitment firm that is more. Maybe broadly focused on their skill set that has like a more keen understanding of really. Delivering a diverse set of candidates that are, you know, frankly more representative of the populations that the organizations are focused on. Or do you feel like this has to be like someone who has expertise in libraries?
No, I, I don't. I don't think so. I bet I think that.
I didn't want to push that if that wasn't something that either you or the leadership team might feel was the wrong pathway.
No, I mean particularly if. This board is going to consider hiring an executive director that. Does not have a degree in library science. And, and we've talked about the fact that the, the degree. Has been and continues to be an impediment to advancement of people in color, of color in, in executive positions. Or really in any positions within libraries. And so that's another question that, that this board is going to need to answer for itself. Are you, are you interested in, in exploring someone? As your, as a candidate or as your next executive director? Who has a solid skill set, whatever skills you determine those need to be. But does not necessarily have a degree in library science. You have many staff members of the library who do and, and I'm not, and, and the degree I think is important for a lot of reasons. But does your next executive director have to have that? I don't know. Only you can answer that question. But it may be a way to find. More diverse candidates.
Matt, I have a procedural question and that is Sarah joined the meeting a little bit late and I was taking roll call matters. And we don't have Rita on the line. This is all being recorded. Who is taking minutes? I'm not.
Jody is taking.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jody.
And, and either Jody or a member of her communications team will be taking minutes regularly of your meetings from now on.
Okay, thank you. I just all of a sudden thought, oh my gosh, we, we have a, a recording of this, but. I've not been jotting down notes the way that Rita would.
You have, yeah, I know you have, you have Jody who's taking care of that.
Thanks.
Okay. So.
So if there's anything, you know, as you, as you continue talking and thinking about this, if there's any other active role you want me to play in all of this. All you, you obviously need to do is let me know.
Okay. So David, would you feel comfortable putting together an RFP language and Colleen, would you? Be willing to, you know, work with David on that so that we can put together an RFP out. Be prepared to put that out once we get some more information, some of these other contexts. Just so that we are in a.
I'm happy to put a draft together. You said, Matt, that you still had an example of one from the time that I was hired. Is that correct?
I believe it, it is just the, the listing that Al's Calabrese Berry put together that went out to.
Oh, just the advertisement.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, yeah, no, I can, I'm happy to, to put together a draft of an RFP. I don't know how, how, you know, how. Detailed or brief you want that to be, but I can draft something and then send it back to you for, or to Colleen for review.
Yeah, but if you could. Send that to Colleen first because she, she may, she has better, more experience with it than I, which is none.
And, and Colleen, if you, if you feel more comfortable drafting something, that's fine too. It's however you want to do it. Now, and so, but just so that I'm clear. Is it your intention then that you would wait to approve and send out that RFP? Until you meet again in January or do you want something to go out more, more sooner than that?
I, I would like it to go out sooner.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't feel like we need to wait till to vote on RFP for this.
I'm, I'm asking the question because I want to be sure that that's, that's what you all agree, you know, that's what you're, what you want to do.
So I would go from the rest of the board. If everybody else would want to be able to review that RFP before it goes out.
I was actually just typing you about that. I, I have not written an RFP before. I have had to deal with them a little bit. In my previous job, but. I think. Being the finance point of our board right now. It would not go amiss for me to see what this RFP looks like that we send out. So I can have a better understanding when we. You know, if I look at these now, I'll have a better understanding of the ones we send out for things. In the future and I'd appreciate, I'd appreciate learning on something that I think I have a better grasp on.
All right. So I can, I mean, I can try to have a draft, at least a rough draft put together within the next week. I know that, I mean, that comes, leads us right up to, you know, the Christmas holiday, but you know, I can certainly do that.
The other thing that I wanted to talk about is. Which we failed to mention earlier is that if we go with an executive search firm, which I. I think we should. There's a fee associated with that. Every firm does it a little bit differently. Standard, I think, in the industry is thirty-three percent of the salary. So I just wanted to throw that out there. So all trustees know that, you know, that there, this, there, there will be an expense associated with this.
There certainly will. Okay.
Spence was not.
So we're, so we're talking about fifty thousand dollars basically.
Well, not quite, but.
Well, if you've been around longer.
I mean, it depends, I mean, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if that's, if that's thirty-three percent of the current director's salary or thirty-three percent of what you will. Be expecting to pay your next executive.
The latter.
The latter, okay, so.
And that was not budgeted in our budget that we approved.
No, but I mean, that's usually that doesn't happen anyway.
Yeah, it's usually not in our, as part of our budget discussion.
No, I'm just saying, where do we get it from? Where do we, what do, how?
We could just not have.
I mean, it would be, it would be incredible if we found someone that quickly, but I anticipate there will be a few months where we will not be paying David's salary.
Being, right. No, I'm also wondering if. I'm, I'm now wondering if Billy wants to change his position or whether or not he wants to do this. Like if we just offer him. Offer him that, that sort of that salary, maybe it's looking, looking a lot better for, for Billy. He's like, yeah, I'll, I'll take that.
Oh my goodness.
What? Need to do the search?
Or we could ask David, what would it, what would it cost to have him stay?
Since we think of the budget, Ted, think of the budget, come on.
We, I seem to understand that we have a consensus around the RFP, but. Matt, can we talk about the process going forward? I think it would be helpful for everybody to kind of understand. Will this be? I don't want to say negotiated because that's the wrong word, but will this be discussed at regular board meetings? Will we set some special board meetings to go through this process? Just want to kind of walk it through.
Thank you.
I think, well, I mean, we can do it whichever way we want. I, I honestly don't have a very. Clear memory of how we discussed it prior to doing the interviews. The interviews were special meetings. You know, the interviews with candidates were special meetings outside of our regular boards business. But in terms of the other discussion pieces we had. Elaine Hart, who was the board president at that time. You know, coordinated a lot of that with Alice, our, our consultant. So.
I, I think what will happen, I think, is that you will end up having a lot of closed sessions. On the nights that you have your regular meetings in addition to having to schedule some special meetings.
Can I, is there, I, I think maybe another way to ask a question that Colleen asked or another angle is just. Maybe if we can figure out like what we would be expecting to come our way in the January, like or what we would want to have done. Given this, in, in this process by our January meeting, like what are we hoping?
What's our timeline?
Yeah, like, well, what do we, right, I mean, you know.
Well, that's, I mean, that's a good question because if we, if you're saying that you want a, an RFP to go out soon. A part of that's going to need to be a deadline by which individuals or firms will make submissions. So when do you want the RFP to go out? When do you want? Interested firms to have submitted their credentials? And then when do you want to review those as a board and make a decision?
Well, what's a, what's a, again, I'm in academia, these. Like these things take months and months and months and months for every, for every step. So what, what is the timeline that we're, I mean, what's a standard timeline? For the executive search firms to be able to get back to us, like what's reasonable? I'm sorry, Colleen, you were saying something I, I, I just turned away.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, again, my opinion is it's perfectly reasonable to expect. That you will have submissions in time to review. And then if you want even to interview individuals or firms at your January meeting.
Okay.
I think, I mean, I think that, I mean, if we, if we can get.
Be mindful though that is the holiday season and a lot, you know, I think one thing you guys commented about earlier is the big firms that are like used to churning these out. I don't think we'll have any difficulty replying to an RFP in the midst of the Christmas holiday season. I think that will potentially be a disadvantage to smaller firms. You know, that may not. Do these as frequently or, or need additional resources to pull. So I just want to be mindful of that, like as we're thinking about creating, creating an equal playing field for. Maybe smaller or more diverse owned recruitment firms that we may want to be mindful of that kind of the timing. If we put, if we put this out next week. And to ask people to have it back in four weeks in the middle of a, of a holiday season, I think, you know, could, could undercut the capability of some smaller firm.
That's, that's, that's a great point. So yeah, you just, I mean, you, you need to decide because. A part of an RFP, I think, needs to be clear when you expect to have a, a response.
Madrima, I was gonna say, so normally I would recommend a month. But to Sarah's point, the holiday is certainly an issue. I think this goes to a larger concern that I have, which is our initial discussion around naming an interim. Because. I, I cannot imagine. A situation in which I would feel comfortable not having an interim director named. And. I just think that the situation being what it is, that it is impossible for us to be able to guess. At when we would have somebody in place and that it is. To Ted's earlier point, like. This is our job, right, is to, to name an executive director and then I'm not, I would not feel comfortable not having somebody at the helm. For any amount of days. And so if we are going to be thoughtful about that RFP process. And ensuring that we are not disadvantaging anyone in that process. That extending that timeline by even a, a week or two would not be. Difficult and if we had a, somebody in, in mind for an interim, that it would be part and parcel of what we. Have planned out.
Thanks.
I was just gonna say quickly, I think, I think with the holiday timing. You know, as, as I think about the vendor population, we're considering, I would recommend that we offer a six week, if we're gonna drop this next week, if we think we can do it that quickly. I would say maybe six weeks to respond, which may not get us to a place where we'd be. Selecting at the next meeting.
Well.
It might be past the next meeting. It might require a special meeting.
I, I, yeah, I think, I think that's right. And if, and if others. Among you feel the same way that Colleen does, then, then in that case, my, my suggestion would be that you don't do an RFP now. My suggestion would be that you spend your time now trying to decide. How you're going to select an interim director and don't do anything about hiring a firm until you have one. I mean, if, if, if you, if you feel strongly that you need to have an interim director in place. Then I would say, spend the time that you have while I'm still here, making a decision about that. Feel comfortable that you have someone in place to administer the organization. And then put out an RFP for a, for a consultant.
I would also. Add as a build to that, David. That if we are thinking about an interim position. That if we were going to be thinking about somebody in-house, that this is also a professional development opportunity.
It is for sure. I mean, it, yeah, to, to Virginia's question in, in chat. You know, right, again, right now, we don't, the library doesn't have a, a, an assistant or an associate director. The library has a, a team of directors that serve as the leadership team, so. I don't know whether you're, you're inclined to have a, a, someone who is currently an employee be the interim director. Or when, or whether you're thinking you're going to need to find someone from outside of the organization to come in just as an interim and do that. Because just like there are all kinds of, you know, there are different firms and people who serve as executive search firms. There are also library executives, retired executives and others in the, in the field, the profession. That basically make a, a sort of semi-career of going around being interim directors for libraries. So, I mean, that's a, but again, that's, that's a different, that's a different question. There's a different kind of search. I mean, if you want to find someone to be your director. Because that's important, then, then, you know, don't. I don't know how much of this you want to try doing simultaneously, but if that's important, then I would say make it a priority now. To figure out how you want to find it, an interim director. And then once you have someone that you're comfortable with, then. Begin in earnest your. And then once you have someone that you're comfortable with, then begin in earnest your search for your next executive director. And then you can give a lot more time to a firm that might want to apply to do the search for you.
If we are going to do an interim director, then David, do you have an opinion about whether an external or internal would?
If, if you're, if you're, if you're going to, if you're gonna, if you're going to hire, I mean, I mean, we'll, I, I guess I will, I have two, I have two answers. The answer number one is there are people within the organization right now who are more than capable of, of working as an interim director. They have the skill set to do it. My advice to you would be that you hire someone from outside the organization. If you're going to, if, if, if it's, if you, if you want and need to have an interim director for an extended period of time, then I would suggest you certainly allow people within the organization right now to apply to do that. But you, you broaden your search to people that are potentially outside the organization. Does that make sense?
Um, sort of.
It's just.
I mean, I'm not gonna, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna recommend it. If you're looking for me to recommend an individual within the organization, I'm not gonna do that.
No, I'm trying to understand if you, for the way that the leadership team works together that you're saying that works well. Are you then saying that having somebody from outside would?
Well, again, I, I think, I guess, my previous recommendation was based on the assumption that you were going to begin looking for a firm immediately, hire one within a short period of time and actively begin your search for your next executive director well before I leave, namely in January. Right now, the way the conversation I'm hearing, it doesn't sound like you're comfortable doing that for a variety of reasons. That it's going to take you a bit longer to decide what firm you want to hire to do the search. In that case, I'm going to be gone before your search even begins, which means this search is going to take you well into 2022. In which case, you're going to need to have an interim director around for a, for a good while. And in that case, you know, you, I'm not sure that, um, it's any, any member of the, and, and if you're not, and if you're not comfortable just working with the leadership team as a leadership team in that capacity, I don't think that it's necessarily, again, unless you're willing to hire them to, to do the job, independent of the job that they're doing and allow them to put that job aside for a while, then I don't know that you're going to be able to hire anybody or want to want to hire someone within the organization right now. In other words, let's say you put out a call for an interim director, a member or two of the current uh, staff just choose to apply for the job, you're going to need to have someone for the next six to eight months. They're going to need to put their other job aside and just focus on that. And you're going to need to have a contract with them. You're going to need to pay them to do that job. You're not going to be able to just, to just assume they're going to step into the job, you know, as whatever their position is now, ex- accept the salary that they're making and do the job as the interim director, right? So this is a different, this is a, it's a completely different kind of relationship then. And in that case, I think it might be easier and better and wiser to find someone from outside the organization to do that.
And Betsy DeVos needs a job.
So, you know, again, I, it's, this is, this is your search and you need to do what you're, what you feel comfortable doing. But again, right now, it sounds like you need to focus on finding an interim director before you focus on finding a firm to help you find your next executive director.
Can I ask a quick question? Uh, Colleen, you and Ted both kind of expressed significant concern about, you know, really feeling like an executive director was your, was your priority. Um, did any other team members have, uh, board members have feelings about, you know, working with kind of the leadership team as they are, or are really feeling strongly about um, an interim director scenario? I just kind of want to hear consensus on that conversation because I, I probably am less, um, less of an advocate for an interim director, but, but I want to kind of feel out what people are thinking and why.
I would also just, Sarah, that like my concern isn't that like our, my priority is finding an executive, although that is, um, it's the timing. Like, I just do not think that we can have somebody in place in a comfortable amount of time that we would not need an interim director.
You just feel like because our, our perspectives and our priorities around the work that we've been doing are so nuanced that, that we're gonna, we're gonna take our time and you don't want to feel like you're being hurried because we're, we're without an executive director.
Exactly right.
Got it. Okay, that's fair. Other thoughts on that?
I, I would agree with that. I think, you know, recently we did another big director search for our new director of anti-racism and that took a minute. This is, this is a position that I think would at least be on par with the level of work that went into that. And that also was not, you know, a super quick process. Um, with the holiday thrown in there, I would prefer that we take our time, make sure that we're getting as many good recommendations as we can, as diverse a pool of, of candidates as we can to come to us. Because hopefully whoever this is that we choose will stay for another nine years and will have uh, a lot of impact on the community of Oak Park. And so if it's a matter of, you know, short-term loss, long-term gain and, you know, we have to put a little bit more time in upfront, I would rather we do that and invest in making sure that we're picking the correct person.
And I think, I appreciate that. I think part of it is that, you know, our library is truly like, I'm so impressed with the way that things are run and we don't want to be in a position where we're feeling pressed to get something done and, um, and fall into kind of old patterns in doing that. Um, and, and risk undoing what we have that's valuable and not kind of move more in the direction that we're heading. Um, and just the way that I, because it didn't kind of parallel book universes that may not be exactly the same as the library. The, the, the kind of, um, doing things in an organic way or through normal connections and that sort of thing tends to, to be problematic. So I don't want us to end up doing that.
Going, going back to David's initial comments about the strength of the leadership team. Um, if we had a crisis, whatever that might be, unforeseen crisis, David feels that he has assembled a really good leadership team. And then crisis happens, whatever it is, the leadership team could manage that and would look to the board for guidance. Is that true?
I think that's true. Yes. That's how I would see it working. But again, I, I temper that opinion with, uh, by the knowledge that this, this process for you may, may end up taking a great deal of time next year to complete. And again, in that case, I don't know that it's, in fact, I will, I will just say it's not fair to expect the leadership team to work in that capacity for that extended period of time. You either need to hire one of them away from their current position for an interim period and, and hire them to do that job and pay them to do that job, or you need to hire someone from outside the organization to step in and perform that job.
And if we did hire somebody internally away from their job, then what happens with their job?
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's.
Domino effect, yeah.
Yeah, right, right.
I mean, I think this is, um, Sarah, you asked the question about, you know, what, would we were, we're thinking about this, so um, I'll, I, I'll admit that I'm pretty conflicted because it seems that now we're talking about like two hiring processes, one way or another versus, versus one. So that's just taking me a little bit more time to wrap my head around. Um, and I, and I'll say that one of the, one of the things is that just, I'm, I'm just thinking about it in very practical terms, in terms of like, when we look for the interim, um, how will that? How will that like job description be qual, I mean, it will be quantitatively different, but how will it be qualitatively different from the permanent position? Do, do you know what I mean? Like, will, like, like, will we be like, we'll take B plus candidates instead of an A candidate, but these are our same criteria. I mean, obviously not, right? Like, so, so just trying to figure out the literal mechanics or the criteria for the two different levels that, that's just going to take more thinking. And, and, and I'm really not saying that that means that we shouldn't do it or anything, but it's just, um, I'm feeling a little unprepared to make that decision right now, I guess. But I also don't know what, what our options are.
I feel like, and anybody who has other experience, please correct me, I feel like an interim in the position would be like putting us on autopilot versus the person we want to hire, we want them to look at the direction that we're going and take initiative.
Yes.
So whoever this person is that's coming in for six months, God forbid, longer, just look at the precedent, look at what we've said, look at what we've done in the past and go on autopilot and really listen to the leadership team that's in place. They're there to do the, the physical work that we cannot pile on to the rest of our leadership team because David's job is a whole job.
Right.
But the person that we want in the position long term, we want them to look at the direction that we've gone in the past and say, you know, what next steps can we take? What more things can we do? What other initiatives? Who else can we partner with?
Right.
I think that's the difference. I don't think that to your, to your point, like, we're not like, hey, we'll take any C plus whoever who pops on by.
Well, I said B plus to be, to be, to be, to be fair. But I, I do understand, I do understand what you're saying, Virginia. I guess my, my point is that it just, it seems a little, um, paradoxical to me because it seems that that person, the interim person, then would have to be somebody, not would have to be, but might be in fact best suited as somebody who's already familiar because, you know, they don't, they're, you know, like the, like the, the, you would, you would think that to be able to effectively do the job, right, on an interim basis, where they're not like in it for the long haul or they don't have to have, like, they don't have the capacity for a steep learning curve. Um, you know, so there just seem to be like contradictions built into, built into this process and, and again, I, I don't know, I, I sincerely just don't know one way or another because Ben, David was first describing at the top of the meeting, um, his position about why we might want somebody from the leadership team uh, to be the liaison, you know, like that made a certain amount of sense, but I was thinking exactly of the workload issue that has now come up, right? That it, but it seems ridiculous that somebody would do this liaison stuff for like an extended period of time. I just, I don't know, without working on both the searches sort of simultaneously, you know.
May, may, may I ask a question? I am with you for approximately two and a half months. Where do you want to be in this process? By the time that two and a half months is over. In other words, where do you see yourself in this process come February 28th or March 1st? That, I think if you put, if you put it in that perspective, think about, we have two and a half more months before the current executive director leaves, retires and leaves the organization. Where do you want to be? What, what decisions will you have wanted to make by then? Will you, do you want to have an interim director in place? Will you want to have selected a firm to help you begin a search? Will you want to have already begun that search? Where, where do you want to be before, before I leave? That might help you focus in your conversation and figure out what you want to have now, what you want to happen by, by your meeting in January and what you want to have happen by your meeting in February.
Well, if you're, I mean, if you're literally asking us, I would choose, I, I would choose the first two things that you said, right? Like, I would like for there to be an interim, uh, director in place. And I would like for us to have hired, um, uh, an executive search firm.
Okay.
You know, like, I would like both of those things to be, to be fixed.
By the time.
Why I've been waking up in the middle of the night like worried about this. Because time is marching on.
Well, I mean, you know, I, my experience with this board is that you are, you are very thoughtful, deliberative people, and that is a wonderful thing. Uh, but at some point, you also have to make some decisions. You have, I mean, you have to decide, you know, what, what, what are you going to do and when are you going to do it? Um, so I think you just, I think you need to be deliberative about setting some deadlines for yourself. By this date, we are going to do this. By this date, we're going to do this. By this date, we're going to do this. Because otherwise, the time is going to slip away from you very quickly. And I, and again, I want to be as big a help to you as I can, but in order for me to do that, I need to know what you want me to do and, and when you want me to do it.
David, what are our resources for finding an interim director?
I'm sorry?
What are our resources for finding an interim director in the next? By the new year?
Um, we can, what are our resources? We can, we can put together a, a, a job ad and, and, uh, and put one out. We can, you can, you can, uh, make a point of hiring a consultant sooner and, and tasking them with the job of finding your interim director. You can make a decision that you're going to hire someone from inside the organization and just appoint them to, to the position temporarily. I mean, there are different ways that you can, you can do it. It all depends on what you're comfortable with. I mean, I mean, I could rec, I could make a recommendation to you and you could accept that recommendation. I would have absolutely no problem finding someone that would want to step into this organization with the qualifications to be a placeholder and do that job for you. And you could have someone, I think, in place pretty quickly. But, you know, it, it, it really depends on what you are comfortable doing and how much you want to delegate the responsibility of finding someone.
And that, and that person's job as interim director would be to work with you while you're still with us in the next 60 days.
Yep.
And to figure out how we as a, a board of trustees want to find a, an executive search firm. And that that person knows that he or she is the interim director, is not going to be the person who's going to be the next person in line necessarily. So all of that, th- that person comes in saying, okay, these are, you're going to be running the library. Um, and after March 1st, you are going to be working with David to help the board of trustees determine who the next executive director should be and, and you're, and you're going to be finding an executive search firm.
The, 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 uh, the interim, there's no interim director until there's an interim. And the interim doesn't begin until March 1st.
Right, okay.
Okay, so I'm the director until March 1st, so I'm here to do what you need to do until, until then, right? So again, this is, I mean, I feel like we're talking in circles here. Um, do you want to find a firm to help you do the search or do you want to focus on finding an interim director because you want to give firms more time to respond to an RFP and take your time in selecting one?
I, I, I'm just gonna say, speak for myself. I think we, we finalize the RFP in the next, and I'm, and I hope I'm not bold in saying this, in the next 10 business days and we get it out. And simultaneously, I think we need to bring together a special meeting to determine how we're going to select interim director. That's, that's my recommendation. I think otherwise, you know, we could spend four hours tonight talking about how we're going to select an interim director.
Right.
And I don't, I think we need, I think we need to narrow with you and Billy's help some, you know, three paths, right? To identifying and selecting interim director, going out to the field, identifying a consultant who can help us secure someone or hiring from within, pros and cons of each of those pathways. I kind of feel like that's a special meeting. identifying a consultant who can help us secure someone or hiring from within pros and cons of each of those pathways. I kind of feel like that's a special meeting. We put it on the calendar.
Yep.
You know, the second week of the year. And we get working down that path while we are simultaneously waiting for RFP returns.
Great. And that, and, and honestly, Sarah, that's kind of
That's my opinion.
I, thank you. And I, and that's mine too. And I came into the meeting tonight thinking that that's what would happen, that you would begin right now by looking for a firm. And, and honestly, if you do that and are able to do that by January, the firm will be able also to help you if you want to find an interim director. That's, that's obviously something that they do as well. So if you want, if you're comfortable putting out an RFP now and, and working toward a January date or by the end of January to interview and make a selection, then you will have the month of February to work with that consultant, not only to begin the process, but to find an interim who can begin on March 1st. Are you comfortable with that?
Ted is comfortable with it.
I'm comfortable with that.
Wait, 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 wait. So you said, the timeline that you just said right now, David, was that we would interview the firms in our January meeting? Is that, is that right?
Right.
Oh, I, I feel like, didn't we just say earlier in this conversation that that seemed too early to give?
You, you, you did, you did.
Give the smaller firms.
I'm saying we give them six weeks. I'm not saying that they will necessarily be done by January meeting. I'm saying by the, by February 1st, we'll have RFPs returned.
Okay, because that was
And if we need to schedule an extra meeting for that, I think everyone on this call would be happy to do that.
Of course.
Right. That's, I, I think that's something that I put in the chat earlier was that, so that we'd have a special meeting in between January and February, or January and February meetings.
I think that's perfect, Madarima.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's what I was. I, you know what? I'm also just realizing that I did actually not, I actually did not volunteer to work on the RFP, so I can't say like, yes, we should absolutely just take it out next week. I think that that kind of guy, kind of depends on, on the people who are actually going to be working on it.
I think a target date, as we put that together, if we can get a, you know, something out by the, by the end of the calendar year, having, you know, or like given next, you know, next week by the, you know, by the end next week, it's possible that we could put January 31st, which is the last Monday in January, as a deadline for people to respond. You know, does that seem like a
A rational. Say that deadline again, Matt?
January 31st, the last Monday of January.
All right.
Right. You know, so people have the whole, the whole of the month to.
Great.
That's five weeks, right?
At least.
Yeah, if we, yeah, if we can get it, if we can get it out next week, yeah. Yeah, if we can get, if we can get it out before, before, uh.
So am I, am, am, am I tasked with working with Colleen to get that out?
Yes.
Yes.
I can work on it as well, Colleen, if you need, if you want another trustee to help you with it. I do RFPs for work all the time.
That'd be great, Sarah.
And, and I'll also, you know, I, I know a couple of other recent nonprofit partners that have done searches, so I'll see if I can also get guidance on RFPs that they've completed for their search firms recently. If you have others, Colleen, I'm sure you know people in that circuit too.
Okay. So we, we, we have, we have a, we have an initial direction for David in terms of the RFP. So
Can I ask something really quick? I, I know I kind of just threw that out here and I don't want to push anybody. Is, is there anyone who doesn't feel comfortable with that? Because I, I don't want to be the one who's trying to push against the deadline. I know we're all not sleeping, to Suzanne's point. But I don't want to, I don't want anyone else to be like, to feel like this is pushing too fast for you.
It doesn't feel that way to me, but I, and I, because I also am taking to heart David's comment that
I don't want to use David while I'm here.
What's that?
Well, that is what, that, yes, we want to like
Because I want to use David while I'm here.
As well as his point of that, you know, at some point we have to, we have to pull, you know, we have to pull the trigger on this at some point. You know, it's, we have to get moving. We can't, you know, keep hoping he changes his mind. So, um, so I think, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll start moving on forward on, on the RFP. And then, uh, well, I'll send out, um, a, a, like a poll to, to gauge availability for a special meeting regarding discussions of interim, you know, director process and our timeline, other timeline issues after the, the new year before our regular January meeting.
I have a question, David. Earlier you mentioned that there are like retired people, there are people who do
Oh, yeah.
Rim library director
For sure.
gigs.
Yes.
So it seems like that search doesn't have to be necessarily as involved as the search for the, the replacement director.
No, no, no.
As long as we
It should better not be.
Right, as long as we keep things moving forward, like, like I was saying that
You're, you're just looking for
Doesn't have to be everything that we want.
No, no, you're just, you're just, you're just looking for an authority. You're just looking for someone to help you run your meetings every month. You're just looking for someone to make sure you have the information that you need. You're just looking to make sure that the staff have, continue to have the resources that they need. That's all, that's all you need in an interim.
Well, except that that's the person who's going to, and I put that in the chat too, that's the person who's going to lead us through the budget process next year, right? Like if we're talking about six months.
Maybe.
That's, yeah, so, I mean
But again, but again, you have, but again, you have, you have this outstanding director of operations and leadership team that are, that are, you know, they're, they've been through the process. They know what, what needs to be done.
Madarima, that is excellent incentive for us to not take that long.
Yeah, not to, not to dilly-dally. That's one of my, it's one of my words. Not to lollygag and not
No, lollygag.
I was, I was, I, I started on May 1st and that was my first task to start putting a budget together, so.
That'll be our code word when we're dragging our fee, Madarima. You'll just say budget.
Yeah.
And then somebody who could, if, if, God forbid, it should happen, can handle a crisis with the leadership team.
Of course, of course. Right, yes, definitely. Okay.
And also like kind of contain and hold what has been built up over the period in terms of the proper like energy of, of collaboration. Yeah, that's, that to me seems to be
This is not, this is not a person that's going to change anything. They are just going to maintain what's happening.
I think we're going to get a really good picture of how well have we ingrained our culture into the culture of the library is when we have somebody who is not David, when we have somebody who is simply projecting the status quo as we've said it, do we still sail in the same direction? And hopefully we don't have to observe that into budget time as Madarima said.
I just want to say that we said only, and then we named like seven things that this interim director will have to do, like only the budget, only maintaining the culture of the times, only like leading, you know, like only the spirit of collaboration. So I mean, it's, I just, we're going to need to be careful when we actually craft the, craft the job position for the interim director that we don't have, like only a list, like 15 different, very important things that they would, that they would need to do. Yeah, this is the problem, David, is that you needed to have left some smaller shoes.
You're going to find, you're going to find somebody great. In the meantime, you're going to find someone who's just going to help you maintain while you're looking. Don't worry.
And I, and as a, so Matt, as you were talking about us meeting, are we going to meet to decide how we're going to go about the interim or are because like David suggested that he might know people.
Again, I think
Interim, is that what we want to do?
I, I really think right now you just need to focus on getting your RFP out and focus on the fact that I'll be here at least until the end of February and, and just think, think, think right now about how are we going to figure out who our firm is going to be. For at least a few weeks, put aside the idea of an interim. You don't need an interim yet.
Yeah. And I think, yeah, I heard that too, Madarima, but let's not get carried away. Well, that's, uh, he was being polite. Let's, I think that's a point we'll take. And I think we have a direction on the RFP to start moving forward and a, uh, and a rough timeline. So Colleen and Sarah, and if I remember correctly, Virginia said she wanted to be to look over it as well. So if the three of you are comfortable with what comes together, I, I'm good with it going out for, for that. I don't know that I, I don't, I want to prevent us wordsmithing that to death.
Yeah.
Um, over, especially over email. So, um, so if I, I am, you know, deputizing, anointing you to work with David to work on getting that out. Um, as an ad hoc committee of the RFP for the, for that, to get that RFP for a search firm together with David and staff.
Who was that? Colleen, Virginia and Sarah?
Yes. So.
All right.
Go, go forth and request.
David, will you just reach out to Colleen and I and let us know some times that work for you later this week?
To, to get together and talk to me?
Yeah, for the RFP conversation.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
And Virginia too, right?
You sent it and I didn't see it. Do we have templates for, um, search firm RFPs you guys have used in the past?
I don't have one at my disposal, but I'm sure I can find some.
Okay, if you've got any of the ones, you know, ones that we've run from as a baseline, that'd be great.
Again, I'm not saying that there are any that we have run. I'm saying I could find examples.
Oh, got it. Okay, no worries. If you don't have one on hand, that's fine. I just thought you might have.
Right. No, I don't. Okay.
So David, do you have a, a publisher's agent for your memoirs?
No, I do not. And no, and no one, and no one would waste their time reading them anyway.
What audiobooks are for?
All right.
Do we have, um, do we have language when, um, public starts hearing of, of David's departure and is asking, you know, what's up? Do we have a, a statement to make that is comfortable with David and all of us? I just, because that, I noticed that when, when Matt posted something, there was somebody who was like, oh no. You know, and there's going to be, I think, some, just some responses. And I'm just wanting to know what is it as board members that we should be saying?
Is that, is that something you've thought about, Matt, or not?
No, I've given it, I, I mean, I think I wrote something to, a, a brief statement to Jody that I can send to everybody else. And it was that, um, you know, I am along the lines of, I am sad that David is retiring and leaving us. He has left us better than he found us and we are what, you know, going to be working diligently to finding the director who takes us into the next phase of our library service to the community.
Great. If you can send us that, that'd be great.
Sure.
You know, and any guidance that you have about how to handle.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's that and it's, you know, David has, you know, you know, seen us through a lot of, you know, growth and change. And at this time he has decided to, um, retire and enjoy the, the next part of his life. And I, and I intend to leave it at that for anybody who asks why he's leaving. Because again, he, you know, he is, I think he has made it clear to us about that and I want to respect that as much as I would want someone to respect that for me.
Thank you.
That's why I wanted the language.
You bet. I will, I will find that and, and shoot that around. So having said that, I think we are in a good spot to leave this evening. And unless anybody else has, um, something urgent that they want to bring up, I think we're ready to conclude our business adjourned.
We need a motion. I can't remember in some meetings.
We've completed the, we've completed the agenda items, uh, uh, as presented, so we can, uh, as, as the chair, I can, I can declare us adjourned since we have completed the agenda.
Nice. Okay. Good. Thanks.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Happy holidays, happy new year.
Happy new year.